I have Cameron D. De La Penta here with me and Avery Keagle. They are second graders and they're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, this is the favorite part of the board meeting for me. I have to go. That's right. I wonder why, right? Well, I've got two special kids here who are, one is in Mrs. Carlson class. Cameron is in Mrs. Carlson's class and Avery is in Mrs. House's class. Each of you have something very nice that your teachers wrote about you. Cameron is a very respectful, hardworking, and kind child. He produces amazing work and is a role model to all of his classmates. He is often such a great, he's off to a great start of school year. Cameron makes a positive impact in our classroom. I'm excited to recognize Cameron with this honor. And for Avery, Avery started the school year prepared for second grade and eager to learn. She's been a good friend by helping others with organization, cheering up a sad friend, and using her manners. She constantly follows the school rules and is a great role model for others. I'm happy to have Avery in my class this year and excited to watch her grow. So congratulations to both these babies. And thank you to the parents that raised such great kids and such a big part of our school and our community.
This is for you, honey. Great job starting up the school. You're awesome. There you go, honey. You look beautiful today in your dress.
Now we get to recognize Miss Robin Miller and with all of her primary school prep period. We're recognizing Robin and her team because they've been so organized and willing to serve our four lunch options to our pay-for-two students. It has been a smooth and flawless process and it's only September. Breakfasts and lunches are prepared with care and tables are clean and ready for every class every day since the start of the school year. They have developed an efficient system for dropping off and collecting breakfast baskets to each classroom every morning. So impressive, so well done. We thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Robin, before I was here, I was at primary school and was a principal. I worked with Robin back then and, you know, she's all about what she can do to help kids, no matter what, you know, and that's what makes her special, you know? And so she'll do anything that she can to help kids in the primary school. And then, you know, during COVID, Robin and the staff and Sherry, you went above and beyond to help deliver meals to our kids in our community throughout all that. But that's just something I saw, I mean, that was something that you did that was very visible to the community, but even when it's not visible, you still do the right thing for kids because that's what you're all about. So we really appreciate you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The annual audit report?
It's tight. We have Mary Young from Plumpton and Farmak here. As you know, our financial statements are audited every summer and every September we get to review them. Mary?
Hi, everyone. So I'll be presenting from the bound, yeah, right there. So what we're delivering to you today is the auditor's report on the financial statements. It's an unmodified opinion. That's the cleanest, highest standard that an audit can receive. The auditor's report required by government auditing standards, and also the auditor's report on compliance for each major federal program and on interim control regarding uniform guidance. That is required because the district spends more than $750,000 in federal funds each year and that we are then required to test some of those funds. This year, we tested the education stabilization fund, which gave us 40% of testing of your federal funds. And I don't understand, this is most exciting.
No, I totally get it.
So we're required to test at least 50% of your federal funds. We tested the education stabilization fund and that got us to 40%. You did receive about $5.8 million in federal funds and you spent, that you spent this year up almost $3 million. And a lot of that just has to do with that education stabilization fund that school districts were receiving. We didn't have any findings or matters to note as a part of that testing. There'll also be a data collection form that we'll be preparing. We also took a look at your extra classroom activities and there's a report regarding that. We also did some testing of a few of those clubs and we do have a couple minor recommendations in our management letter regarding those. And then, of course, the communication with those chargeless governments, which is a required letter, and the management letter. So required communications, a couple things to note there. We were required to adopt and implement a new government accounting standard. It was Government Accounting Standard 87. It was required to be adopted for all school district audits this year. So there were some changes to, that basically required us to, or the district to record a lease receivable, having to do with your lease, BOSI's leases of building from the district, so having to do with that. And then also showing right-to-use assets for some of the equipment that you lease from BOSI's. So that was a big change this year. There's also some estimates within the financial statements on your capital assets, your compensated accesses, your pensions, and your other post-employment benefits. And I also have a list, we also have a list of the significant disclosures that you would want to take a look at. The management letter just has a few, few small comments or observations as a result of the audit that you can take a look at. A couple of them have to do with fund balance and your reserves and, like I said, extra classroom activity. It also gives you information about upcoming accounting standards that are going to have to be implemented over the next couple of years and an update on a recommendation that we had last year. So we just wanted to update that. Looking at page four, inspiring to look at some of the numbers, the summary of funds. That just gives us a list, gives you a list of all of your fund balances amounts and also your reserves. So you've got your general fund, your restricted or reserved funds for capital, your capital project, for employee benefits, retirement contribution, the amounts that are assigned, basically designated for the next year and for some purchases in the next year, and then your unassigned fund balance in the general fund. And then you've also got your capital projects fund balance that is a deficit fund balance right now, but that is not uncommon. You're in the process of doing a large capital project. So eventually, the funding and the expenses for that project will net to zero. It just, it's all part of the process that adds your spending and adds the revenues being recognized. And then you have your food service fund balance and then you're also misleading special revenue is your scholarships at the end of the year. Taking a look at your general fund revenue, big increases here, our state aid, your state aid went up a little bit, over around $2 million. That was, you know, other school districts in New York State have seen increases in their state aid as well. So it's pretty common to see an increase there. And also sales tax. Your sales tax revenue went up almost 20%. That's also very consistent with other school districts in Erie County as well as towns and villages within Erie County that also saw increases in the amount of sales tax that was allocated. So overall, your revenue went up about $3 million or 7% compared to last year. And your general fund expenditures, salaries were very consistent year to year in the general fund. You did see an increase in your salaries in your special aid fund because of the education stabilization grant money that you received and that's where that money is and those expenditures are recorded. So you did see increases in salaries there as some programs were implemented to spend those funds. Employee benefits was very consistent year to year. There was an increase in your teacher's retirement, required payments, the rate for that, and a small increase in your employee retirement rates as well. I know the teacher's retirement rate for the next year is also increasing, but the ERS rates aren't out yet. You had your required debt payment in the general fund, which was about $5 million. Increases in BOSI services, specifically teaching regular school, some capital commitments you had with BOSI's, and also some services for children with special needs. And transportation, first year back, 100% in person since COVID. So increases in transportation costs, and you're seeing not only just transporting the kids to the district, to the buildings every day, but also, you know, field trips and sporting events and things that just didn't take place in 2021. So increases there. So overall, your general fund expenditures increased about 5.6%. Page seven, government-wise summary reconciliation. This is just on the government-wise part of the financial statements. This is where your fixed assets are recorded as assets, which they aren't on a fund basis. And you're, you were showing liabilities for your pensions and for your other post-employment benefits and also for your debt. So this just compares year to year, some of those numbers. Capital assets went up because you do have that funding for those capital projects, offset by depreciation. Long-term liabilities went down because you're making your debt payments. Other liabilities, a decrease in your bands payable at year-end, offset by a slight increase in your accounts payable and some of your accruals. And then your pension, other post-employment benefit, and all of those disclosures all kind of added together for an increase in the liability of about $800,000. I will say that your teacher's retirement and your employees' retirement share of that in New York State, they were liabilities last year, they're assets this year. Basically, what that says is the teacher's retirement system and employees' retirement system are overfunded. They're funded, TRS is funded currently at about 113% and ERS at about 103%. So that resulted in all school districts and municipalities under this year having assets versus liabilities on your balance sheet. So that changed things up a little bit, but overall, then you can just see there's a reconciliation at the bottom of that page of going from the fund basis to the government-wide basis. Page eight is basically just a summary of what I said about that previous page. And unless there's some questions, does anybody have any questions or anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, in regards to the audit report, I would ask that the board officially accept, perceive, and accept the receipt of the audit report and motion of the board.
Just a motion to approve. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nongraduate report?
We have two non-graduates. Both students did, from our fine work for our summer school principals, did graduate in the summer. So they will be counted towards a four-year and then a five-year graduate, graduates on the report that will come through from the state. So although they got, those two were not going to have a four-year, they will get our five-year, which will help us.
Good to see.
Yeah, good, great work.
I'm going to sit on this side because it feels a little off balance.
Okay, so we have our report from the middle school and high school summer school program that we held this year. So here are our numbers. We had a five-day-a-week program, three hours a day, and it ran from July 11th through August 12th. So there are the numbers there for how many students we had for middle school and then how many students we had for the high school. So here are the total enrollments if you look at summer of 2021 versus summer of 2022. We had a drop in the total amount of students, which goes to show how important it is to have our students here with us in school every single day, just getting them back into their routine and into the instruction. We are able to, you know, take down those numbers and have less students enroll with us for the summer school program because they satisfactorily completed their curriculum throughout the school year.
Yeah, we had a number of live classes and we had some students who had to take their class on Gradpoint for sixth grade. We had, for sixth grade, we had all in-class, the students taking math and ELA. And then we also had algebra, the math, Algebra I and II, English, 10 and 11th grade were also in-person. The Gradpoint classes are listed there. We couldn't get teachers to teach them, so we went with Gradpoint, which then helped us.
Can you describe for the board what Gradpoint looks like for a student?
Gradpoint is an online-based credit recovery program. We actually utilize that at the high school, you know, throughout the school year for any students who may be credit deficient. It's a more quicker way for them to get their credits back to hopefully get them on track for graduation.
All the students that were in middle school all passed. We had no failures for middle school, so they all progressed to the next grade.
And here are the high school course pass and fail information. Students did very well. We only had three course failures for the summer school program. And here are the Regents credits earned, you know, also noted were the two August graduates that were able to complete their programming. So we had a lot of students earn, actually, some of the students qualified through the special appeal process, which also helped some of our students, you know, to close up the regular school year. So we had some students that were able to earn some credits back.
This was the first year that, in a long time, that we held the Regents exams here at school.
Yeah, the students did fairly well because we were able to provide ENL services, special education services, so the students were able to receive all of their accommodations that they received during the school year, not only through instruction, but also for the testing process.
I was going to say, that's really impressive, the drop from '21 to '22. I mean, it was my assumption, I mean, the assumption is because the students are back. Do we know that? I mean, that's kind of a major cause for that drop?
Yeah, there's, yeah, I mean, I ran the numbers for the two years and it's, we were running roughly about 45 to 50% with fewer failures. High school had 96% passing rate of all the courses last year. So we've made a, made a huge, huge stride towards that. Credit recovery was kind of our safety valve, you know, when we came back from the pandemic. So students now, we're really using it just as a, as a need, you know, maybe for a credit here or there for a senior who may have jammed themselves up. So we're definitely making some major strides pretty quickly, even I'll admit quicker than I anticipate.
How long have we used the Gradpoint?
It was here before I was here.
Yeah, we, I've used it for a number of years in summer school. We used to only use Gradpoint just up until about two, two years ago when we went, we started hiring staff. So we tried to get, we tried to hire for all classes, but unfortunately, we couldn't find enough teachers. So if we can't find a teacher for that class, then we do Gradpoint. And we do have a teacher that is certified in that area, but they can do like all the sciences and all the math on Gradpoint. And so they, there is somebody there to assist them.
Oh, cool, okay.
And I should add that the reason why we're able to offer a full summer school program is because of that federal stimulus money. So that's, that's what's causing, you know, that's what's enabling us to run a full program versus just Gradpoint in the summer.
The few that did fail, are they retaking the classes?
Yeah, that's where we utilize like the Gradpoint credit recovery to kind of boost some, you know, throughout the year, they may take like two English classes, one's on Gradpoint, one's, you know, live if they were, you know, in their current grade level.
My second question is the same thing with the three students that didn't. Is that based on they failed from the material itself or attendance?
Attendance.
Attendance, yeah, that's, okay.
And we don't use, we're not, we're currently not using Gradpoint. So if those students fail, let's say ELA 9, they're back in ELA 9, with the exception of seniors who try to keep them on track to graduate on time, we may be using credit recovery for them, you know, here and there. The need isn't as high to use credit recovery as it was once.
Thank you.
He's doing great job as always with summer school. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would recommend the board approve the financial non-personnel consent agenda items one through four as submitted.
Can I have a motion?
A motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We recommend the board approve personnel consent agenda items one through eight as submitted.
Do we really have to do one? I was mouthing with her.
I would like to, one second.
All in favor?
And one, which is most important. Congratulations. New business? Yes, I would recommend that the board approve or accept the donation from Bank of America as presented.
Can I have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
This is a $500 donation for our math student program. I would recommend that the board approve the extended sick leave request as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Sorry, I got sidetracked with the doorbell. I was like, why is the doorbell going off?
Recommend the board approve the planetarium instructor fee schedule as presented.
Can I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I would recommend the board approve the use of school facilities application, number four.
Can I have a motion?
One second.
All in favor?
And one more. I would recommend the board approve the use of school facilities application, number five on that portion of the agenda.
Can I have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right, I'd like to recommend the board approve the second reading of the policy update as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
We have two of our leads on here tonight. Any, any report on?
So I'm speaking on behalf of our, our liaison, he's not here as well. We were talking about the freshmen and their introduction to high school. I mean, he's a freshman mentor and I'm in a choir class with only freshmen. So we both have different like takes on the freshman experience. From my perspective, all of the freshmen, at least in my one choir class, are really happy with my school so far, especially coming from the middle school with like all of the COVID restrictions. They, there were talks about the direct code with them. All of them are happy with how it is now. A lot more school spirit with them than what I saw in my freshman year. We also talked about social media, Jeff and I. We saw an Instagram account for the senior class, I think it was made by the math business class, and it's been documenting like a lot of the school events so far. So we thought that it'd be important to bring up a more positive take on social media with our students. So that, I believe there will be like posting images from all of our school events going forward. I saw a freshman that out from a few weeks ago, but we thought that'd be important to bring up.
Speaking on the social media, on Spirit Week this week and homecoming, so there's a lot of people possibly spreading information about that. The school brought back the cafeteria tables, which a lot of students are quite excited about that because communication skills are much better now. The lunches are back, I know that, which many people are excited about. It was really hard to get lunch last year with the whole COVID restrictions and all. Other than that, I believe everything's going great. There was the 20 attendance day thing that was brought up by a couple of students. I believe this was already intact during, before COVID and all. Many students feel that like 20 days is very limited and quiet a little bit, but many students feel that it's the right, right amount of activities you should because like many students are gallons of intense school. I will agree that I, it's really hard for me to attend school, but this 20 days thing is like making me actually go school, so, yeah. They should get more. They feel that like 20 days is very like a shit in the mouth.
So that's, that's good. Do we know their reasoning? I mean, are these students, are some of these students working, you know, helping support their family? Is there, are there reasons? We know the reasons, and it's just, I just don't want to be a school worker.
Students are, because of work and me and just like family. For me, I like take care of my whole family, so like it's hard for me to show up to school sometimes being like, you know, me and my mom help the family a lot, especially since all my siblings are moving out. But then there's work, there's like just sports and like the schoolwork is just piling up on them. So I guess it's like really mental health rather than, yeah.
Any question? Thank you. Great job, guys. You're welcome. Any resident handout?
She missed one.
Oh, sorry, whoops, thank you. Um, your county school board update. I want to go first. I did not make the legislative meeting, I'm sorry.
So I made my committee meeting. Budget and finance, first meeting, our next meeting's coming up in December, January, on my calendar. It's going good, so. There's tons of events planned. I know there's the student liaison, which I didn't, there's other student liaisons on the list.
Yeah, location's been changed to Collins.
Yes, it's just changed to Collins. But I don't know if Maryville has submitted anything as of yet.
Yeah, we did. Me and you are going and Joe, correct?
Yep.
Tentative, yes, yep.
I mean, unless the grandchild shows up. I need it.
I don't think they have problems.
We will be there.
They're not problems.
Is anyone attending the convention? Now we can go to resident then.
Why am I the only one?
Wait, can I make a comment?
Whoa, whoa, isn't that how it works?
I just want a quick, um...
You're going to stand up.
Stand up.
Just a quick comment. The Spirit Week.
The Spirit Week, and everybody dressing up every day? I was just thinking, I was hoping for more everybody doing everything the same day. I thought it would be more helpful for all families, if you've got a kid here, this kid's dressing, I just noticed it wasn't, so I thought it'd be more helpful for them.
As far as each school?
Yeah, like two were doing Disney, two were doing pajama.
Look at all who does.
You know what I mean, like.
Are you coordinating them?
Coordinating them a little bit, but yeah, just so it's easier for the families, I'm sure, to, you got one kid dressing one way and one a very different way. So just a little.
We tried to coordinate pajama day for today, so we could all wear.
That'd be nice.
All right, that's, that's it for resident input then?
Yep.
No. You gotta get through all this. I will not be in my pajamas on Thursday. That is not gonna happen. Got a whole surprise. We usually have our Dickover Community Association meeting on the first Thursday, but if we do come on the first Thursday, we're gonna crash your, your ice cream social, so we won't be there. So we're gonna have it on, on the 13th. We have Mickey Kearns, who is the Erie County, who is he? Come on. Clerk. DMV clerk, DMV is clerk, right? All right, he'll be speaking. Mike, he's our vice president, thank you, Jim. And we had gotten, over the last two weeks, all the residents of St. Louis got their tech school. So I was walking down the street and most of the seniors said, "You got your two schools' tech school." I said, "Calm down." I said, "They don't went up 1.9%. It has nothing to, it has to do with the assessments. If you're gonna do anything, go tomorrow night to the town board meeting and let them have it again, because that's what's happened. It has nothing to do with the school, with the school. It has to do with you guys basing on the assessments." Right, Doc?
Right. You're saying it all, though.
Well, I mean, I've been through, I've been through all this before, but they think they, "Oh, come on, how come, how come we're doing all these capital projects? Well, you want a place to run down?" We're doing, they don't know what's going on, that's the problem is. We gotta get that, we gotta get that message out to the, to the area, the district of what's going on here, okay? And I mean, I'm proud of what our school is. I, I, look at the football field, look at everything you guys do, all the work you've done at the primary school, it looks great. You know, a lot of work they've done, but they don't understand it because they're not involved, they don't see it, okay, or they're not told. So that's why I'm there to tell them what's going on. And that's about it, I won't say anymore.
I bet you want to.
I do, but I don't think it's the place to go, right? Is it all right?
Yeah, it's up to you.
Last Saturday, I had the opportunity to go on a single-engine airplane, ride with Mr. D'Angelo, he's a great pilot.
He didn't call you a goose, did he?
The only thing that, the only thing that kind of bothered me, we were up about, what was it, 2,700 feet or something? He said, "Would you get out and watch the..." We should do that. No, only kidding, no. But I tell you what, it was, you know, it was something I'll never forget, I enjoyed it. I wouldn't want to be a pilot because all the stuff that he has to do to keep that plane up there. I mean, it's a lot of work, but it was a lot of fun and I really appreciate it.
A lot of pedaling.
No, it's that angle for the brakes, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, can we have an update on the buses? Where we're at. How's the answer going?
A little question.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Buses, I think.
For under the bus.
No, there was a particular.
Well, Jeff, in general, the construction on Maryville Drive has caused a lot of delay with transportation and traffic on the main campus. And the inability for the buses to enter and exit through Maryville Drive has caused a lot of delays. And that's, you know, starts with the first run and then it just builds up by the third and fourth runs, they're, they're running later. They paved Maryville Drive, so the buses should be able to start using, using that entrance and exit, and that should help, you know, with, with timeliness of the buses.
Were they better today?
Were they better? I didn't get any calls, that's another thing.
Were they a little better considering intermedia?
It was a little better today, we just had one bus that was late.
The parents are notified, though, when the buses are late, right?
I did, when I had, I was at the freshman night out and it was a, it looked like a really good turnout, there was a ton of freshmen there, a ton of the senior class was there helping, and it looked like they all had a really good time. So I'm glad that the students and the faculty are doing that, but.
I have something to say. I was speaking to the vice president of SGA and they said that they didn't need a DJ for homecoming, because they said it's just going to waste some money when they could just plug in the phone. So they have a whole playlist ready and they just plug it into aux and it'll play throughout the whole gym.
As long as it's my playlist.
No, it's a, it's a playlist that's reviewed, I believe by a discrepancy, so.
Okay, I was just gonna say, is someone, is someone reviewing this?
I don't think you can know anything on my playlist.
I guess as long as it's being reviewed ahead of time, probably would be the way to go.
Jason sits there mortified, but.
I have issues with the DJ, thanks for calling it loud as it is. I have some things like, I'm just, I'm officially old, I just. Officially old.
I got it.
Well, I'll DJ too, I'll be sold on it.
May I have a motion to go into executive session in regards to litigation?
Motion.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.